Call this meeting to order, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel President Perez.
Here.
Counsel member Van.
Here.
Counsel member Benedetti.
Here.
Counsel member O'Halloran.
Here.
Counsel member McErvin.
Here.
Counsel member Prince.
Here.
And counsel member Corman.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, next up, we have an exciting night, we have a swearing in. Our newest council member Angela Benedetti, in doing the swearing in, will be Dawn Persons.
I, Angelina Benedetti.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the office of Council position number two.
To the office of Council position number two.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations. I just want, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to say a couple of words, this is a very exciting night for me, and I think anybody that has known me at all for very long knows how important it is, because I never put on a shirt in time. So this is a very, very proud and special night for me, and I know it's a proud and special night for your family, but especially your dad, who I know as a retired firefighter, a friend would be so happy, and I know he's looking at that one. Congratulations.
So we will be having cake in the council conference room directly following the council meeting. Okay, okay, next up, we have a proclamation.
Okay, proclamation, National Black History Month. Whereas the beginning of Black History Month was first called Negro History Week, as conceived and announced by historian Carter G. Woodson and celebrated during February 1926. And whereas in 1976, 50 years after the first celebration, the nation had come to recognize the importance of black history in the American story, and the week was expanded to a month. And whereas confident that their struggles matter in human history, black scholars, artists, athletes, and leaders have used their talents to change how the world views African Americans. And whereas African Americans, as well as other people of African descent, have been influential in shaping world politics and diplomacy. And whereas African Americans are establishing and maintaining successful enterprises in Renton. And whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, has selected African Americans and the vote as the 2020 National Black History Month theme. And whereas the city of Renton, in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. And whereas Renton History Museum is hosting a virtual tour of Renton's African American historical sites on February 6th, and Black Fashionista on March 5th. And whereas Renton African American pastors in the city of Renton are honoring Black History Month with Celebrating Black Excellence, a special event with speakers, drama performance, and a panel dialogue on February 26th at 6:00 PM at Sky Center. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 to be National Black History Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join in learning more about the rich history of African Americans during this special observance. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 10th day of February 2020, signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel member Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the proclamation be adopted as read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Up to receive the proclamation is our dear friend, Dr. Linda.
Thank you, thank you.
Governor Linda Smith.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, we're celebrating black excellence businesses in our community, and we have two of those representative here tonight, Efren from Boonbuna and in Saxoan, and we would just like to take a picture and ask him to have a few words, and thank you.
Absolutely.
Should we do this first?
Sure.
Okay.
I would like to thank Dr. Linda Smith for nominating our salon, and I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, getting like that. And I'd like to thank the Renton City Council for this award. And Theresa and I, we have worked in the city of Renton since 1997. We took over ownership of Sax Salon in 2005, and as African American women, gosh, I can't stop, I'm so sorry. We appreciate the opportunity of the freedom of doing business here in the city of Renton and in America. We also work hard outside the city by sharing our knowledge of hair care to children who come from diverse backgrounds and multicultural hair. We teach foster parents and their caregivers on how to take care of these children. And we go over the whole state, we go from one end of the state to the other, to teach these children about six months, six or seven months out of the year. So every time we teach a class, we always refer back to the city of Renton, because this is where our life is, this is where we exist. And so every time we go across the state, we refer to the city of Renton, so we're very honored. So thank you very much for this recognition and award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, I am truly grateful. I'd like to start off by saying I'm very grateful to Woodson for who we have this month. Additionally, to those that have fought and built and given their lives and worked so hard to, from the African American community, to bring America to where, to the contributions that have been provided. Congratulations to Sax, Dr. Linda Smith, very grateful to the council. Additionally, I'm very grateful to the city of Renton. It's, the city of Renton is where, you know, my father first came to, when he first looked for an opportunity, when we were immigrants, refugees, and it was with Boeing. We were very grateful for that opportunity, and Renton has always been in our minds, and we've always been in the community. Coming here as someone who is young and trying to figure out something outside of, trying to build something for his community, something for not only locally, but also on a global perspective, Renton has been that community in which I've been able to do that. Boonbuna, of course, has, of course, an attachment to Africa, but it also has attachment to the local community in which it's in. And that is seen every day in the cafe that we're fortunate to have here in the city, that has been supported by the people of Renton, that is in how we collaborate, we support other businesses, other nonprofits, and our hope is that we can only continue to do more of that. We are grateful for this opportunity, and we are looking forward to just continuing to grow. I was looking for a city that I could build a bond with. I'm so grateful to know each and every one of you council members, the mayor, and for the support that you have provided Boonbuna. I am grateful to the city, and I am grateful to grow within here. Thank you tremendously.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council, and for your support of our local businesses, and particularly this month, as we celebrate the excellence of African Americans, blacks in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have administrative report, but in lieu of administrative report, we are going to have a briefing about the flooding in our city from Deb Needham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have a whole team here, because that's really what it takes to run a disaster, so even though we had sort of a marginal, on the edge disaster, we've got myself, Deborah Needham, we've got Jillian Edge, our emergency management coordinator, Ron Straka, utility systems director, and Kelly Beamer, community services administrator. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up to Ron, to start by talking about the context of the weather that we experienced.
Thank you, Deborah. So I'll start off with, you know, as you know, we've been in a flood situation resulting from an atmospheric river that caused a lot of rainfall and snow mountain in the mountains. It started back on Thursday, last Thursday, February 6th. The Green River and Cedar River are both still at Phase 3 flood, so it's an ongoing event. We had several areas that were impacted, SR 169 still closed to traffic, you can't travel on it, we've had some problems on the trail, and we've had to close 148th Avenue Northeast by May Valley Road. But in all and all, our city flood protection facilities and storm systems performed pretty well, as well as due to the good response from our Public Works Maintenance Department and our Community Services Department on protecting city facilities from flooding. And as the floodwaters recede, we will be conducting inspections of our infrastructure and our facilities to assess for any damages to those facilities. This slide shows a picture of the flow over time on the, both the Cedar River and the Green River. The Green River reached, Cedar River and Green River both reached Phase 4 flood warnings on the Cedar River. The peak flow was about 9,000 CFS, which is a very large flow for the river. And the Green River reached 12,300 CFS, which is also Phase 4. In my 30 years here at the city of Renton, it's only the second time I've ever seen the Green River go above 12,000 CFS. And rivers are expected to remain high, they're starting to recede, we expect to see the rivers recede to about 2,000 CFS, the Cedar River to recede to 2,000 CFS by Thursday, and this graph shows the peak, and then the dotted line shows how they're predicting the river to recede over time.
So we know that there are a number of places in our city that we watch closely for flooding, so what you have on your screen is just the shortlist of what those areas are that we pay special attention to. So Jillian Edge was our duty officer on duty for the duration of the event. We have a 24/7 duty officer with emergency management, and their responsibility when they're on duty is to keep track of all of this, so I'm going to let Jillian speak to the city response that occurred.
As Deb spoke to before, this was kind of a whole city response, as emergencies generally are. There is monitor reporting in response to a wide range of things, including facilities, trails, road closures, debris, weather, and we monitor those river gauges that gave us the data that you just saw. Public Works helped with landslide clearing on Maple Valley Highway, sandbagging across the board, there's cargo cleanup, and we'll kind of go through photos in a second, and we'll let everybody talk about their particular area. Emergency Management is in charge of notifications, so if anything has to go out in case of an emergency, that's kind of our jurisdiction. And then coordination with the counties, so the more information that we get as emergency management, we can talk with the other cities and the other counties as well, to make sure that everybody's on board and helping each other.
Right, this is a picture of along the Cedar River. A picture on the left is a, some of the parking lot ponding and the flooding in the Riviera Apartments. They didn't get flooded other than their parking lot, but it came close to, that walkway is right next to the doors to the building. The other picture in upper right is a picture looking downstream at, on, from the Logan Avenue Bridge, and it shows you the force of the river and the levees and the floodwalls on to the left there that provide protection to the Renton Municipal Airport. And this is a picture of the South Boeing Bridge. Boeing raises this bridge when the river reaches a flood stage, a certain level, they'll raise it up in the air to be out of floodwaters and to protect it from being damaged during a flood. And it also helps prevent water from backing up and causing flooding if it weren't to be raised up. And this was, the bridge was modified back in 1998 as part of our city of Renton levee and flood wall project that we did with the Army Corps of Engineers. As part of that project, where when we built the levees and floodwalls along the lower 1.25 miles of the Cedar River, Boeing modified this bridge so it could be hydraulically raised up as part of that project.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is from the Community Services Department side, Maplewood Golf Course. As you can see here, we, instead of using golf carts, we actually used hydroplanes. We had to, because of the significant flooding, we, this is on the east side of the river, the four holes that were newly built, we had to close those down both Saturday and Sunday. We were able to still play the 14 holes on the other side of the golf course, so revenue was still collected, but as you can see here, significant overtopping of the river's edge into the golf course. This picture here is Carco Theater on the left, where water, it did not overtop the sandbags you see on the right, it was actually from groundwater coming up through where our sump pumps are, that could not keep up with the amount of water that was rising. Our Facilities Division, excuse me, spent two days of 24/7 adding three more sump pumps in there to pump out the water, as well as squeegeeing and having to keep Carco, the basement open, so they were there staffing it 24/7, so there was nobody that came in and did any other damage. Our Parks Team then came in on Sunday and pulled a 24/7 shift on that as well, to keep that open and continue the pumps running. As Ron had mentioned, the river still has not receded enough to completely allow that to dry out, so we'll be monitoring that. The sandbags on the right, super great team effort by both our Facilities and Parks Divisions, they spent most of a day filling the bags and setting up that barrier, and thankfully it held, and we, and we didn't need it. Probably the most damage currently is along the Cedar River Trail, this is directly across from the Riviera Apartments. As you can see where the trail, the cones are, and our barricades, and how close where the undermining and sloughing has gone, it's probably within a couple of feet of the paved trail, so we've had that closed down, 75 yards either side of that area, and we'll be bringing in structural and geotechnical engineers to review that and then decide what impacts and what strategy we'll be needing to move forward with.
So of course, we don't know yet what the dollar impact is going to be of the damages that we've experienced, we certainly have had some. For context, in the 2009 flooding, we experienced approximately $4 million worth of damage in 2009, and a big part of helping a city recover from that is FEMA assistance, and so we aggressively document everything, in fact, finance had set up a code in advance of this incident, so we've been project tracking all along, all we have to do is run the report for FEMA. We are very hopeful that we will get FEMA reimbursement on this one, but what we have to have first is a presidential disaster declaration, and that's entirely up to the President of the United States. We have to apply for it, we will be working that, that's the one thing that Emergency Management does, is we compile all that information, send it to the county. The county has to meet threshold, so we need to get every scrap and every dollar that we can come up with for documented damages and overtime costs in order to help the county push over the threshold mark. The state also has a threshold they need to meet as well. And then FEMA gives us back, if we are eligible and our projects are approved, we get back 75% of the cost from FEMA, and usually the state kicks in another 12 and 1/2%. So it's a significant, important thing to be able to recover from a disaster. Less likely to be able to get is the individual assistance grant, and this is one where we could use every community member's help, if they experience damage, uninsured losses from flooding, we're trying to get and work an individual assistance declaration from the president as well. And this means that individual homes and businesses that suffer damages could also be eligible for reimbursement of damages. And also, also not as likely, and we have to really work for this one, is getting a Small Business Administration declaration, which means people would be eligible for low income, or I'm sorry, low interest loans on property. So this is one of the things that we're continuing to work, we'll work the financial end of this, and then finance takes over and runs, actually collecting and doing the contracting piece of this, once we get it all approved. So I'm going to, at this point, I think if there are any questions for the presenters, I wanted to leave it open to council and the mayor.
No, I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council.
I would, I would just like to thank the staff for the emergency response, and also specifically Ron, thank you for all the reports during the flooding event, it was really useful to know what was happening. But even more, I want to make the point about all the preparation that's been done, all the dredging that's been done, all the bulwarks against flooding that have been created, the walls at the airport. It was really, you know, all that preparation really made this a lot less of a significant event for our city than it could have been, so, so thank you to, to, to all that have been anticipating that, that have been looking, realizing we could have an event like this, and who, who lessened the damage because of that work. Please pass that along. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up, we have audience comment, we have three people signed up. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, you'll have five minutes. Once again, state your name and city of residence. First up is David Lamar.
Good evening, my name is David Lehman, and I'm a resident of Crest Air Park, which is a small residential airport out in Covington, but I work in the city of Renton at the airport. I am a Seattle native, graduate of Big Ben Community College's Aviation Program out of Moses Lake, and Central Washington University's Aviation Program in Ellensburg. And again, I work for airborne aircraft management, we're a small charter company based at the Renton Airport. We currently have three aircraft and working on another, and we provide charter service all over the West Coast, and occasionally even up to Alaska. My background is I worked for the FAA for 27 years, three years as an air traffic controller, and 24 years as an aviation safety inspector. As a pilot, I would investigate accidents, incidents, give check rides, things of that nature. One of our other functions was, when the airport's office had questions about safety, we were the experts that they would bring in to answer the safety questions. Now, the Renton Airport is obviously, it doesn't need to be said, generates a lot of economic benefit for the city. Not just at Boeing, there's a lot of activity on the airport itself. The problem with the FAA airports people is that Renton is a very unique airport. It's probably the only airport in the world where you build large transport aircraft. They take off and they never come back. They go to Moses Lake for the flight testing for a new aircraft, and they end up at Boeing Field. So the safety standards that the FAA has developed are for airports that have normal traffic of large aircraft, not Boeing 737s. So I think it's, I would encourage the council to push back with, to the FAA, to come up with a reasonable standard, as opposed to just, here's the chart, you fit here on the chart. And of course, the number is 500 operations a year, which obviously is an arbitrary number, it's a nice round number, 600 would be harder to explain. But it's maybe, in a few more years, once they get production back, we're looking at 500 takeoffs, and maybe just a few landings. I've been told that 2% of Boeing's operations are landings of 737s, but that puzzles me, because I've never seen a 737 land at Boeing, at Renton. So one statistic I found was last year, there was .5 fatal accidents per 1 million flights. So, let's round it up to one, so for 2 million flights, there is one fatal accident. So if there's only 500 flights a year out of Renton, it's going to be long statistically, it's a very safe operation. And as you probably are aware, there's more risk in landings than takeoffs, about double the amount of accidents. And again, there's so few landing accidents with large transport aircraft here at Renton, that's a very, very low risk. So again, in closing, it's a very unique situation, the FAA can be encouraged to come up with a reasonable solution, and so I encourage you to encourage them to look for a reasonable solution, otherwise the impact on the users at the airport will be very dramatic. You know, you just can't push everything back and say, nobody can be in this area, there's just not enough space. And, and that's a major issue right now, you'd have more aviation activity around if you had a little bit more space, but we're constrained by that. So again, thank you for your time, and it's a pleasure to be here, it's already been a fun event, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jason Collins.
Jason Collins, I'm Jason Collins, I live in the city of Renton. I agree with him, but it's, for defense reasons, the FAA should just give it a pass anyway. Where else are you going to build something like that, Navy stuff? Anyway, so the airport advisory committee, right, I'm like, I'm reading through the Renton City, but Renton Building Code, right, and I run into it once, right, and then I like go back to go grab it again, and I can't find it, it was like right in front of 1-3-030, right, reserved, right, you like recognize this whole section that's reserved, and it doesn't say that was, it doesn't say that was repealed, right, but like that would also be supporting in facts for the same shit that he's talking about. Anyway, I'm interested in whether or not you've ever paid anybody for a Renton, for an airport advisory committee, because it says it should be appointed by the mayor, anyway. Look, I got, I got the Renton Municipal Code going missing until 6:30 today, I got the Renton Police Department in the Renton Library versus the security company that used to be an EEOC, right? So I'm interested in why the switch, and why the King County Library has the Renton Municipal Police Department in it in the first place, like wouldn't it be cheaper for King County to put a King County Sheriff in the library, right? So, so if I was, I would be looking into that if I was a fed for the Airport Advisory Committee, especially considering the discrepancies in, what was September 17th, when he was running unopposed, if you're going to regular election, then the guy that's running unopposed is most likely candidate to receive extra votes. So, yeah, so look, you guys got Kirk, the old Seattle Police Chief of, you know, fired, I don't know if he was fired for government bullying or not, but I know a whole bunch of them were, he arrested Daryl, right, and it's a derelict of duty to have Kirk, Daryl's friends, and Richard or David all in the same city when we're talking about $2 million that was stolen. Because he was way too trusting in a mental handicap state, right? So he's like, and then Daryl steals it, and then Daryl, I was in jail with when my girlfriend was beating on me, right, so ended up in jail with Daryl, and Daryl says he still had a million and a half left, right? So figure that one out, right? Because he, David never got any of his money back, from what I know. I've talked to him about it, he says that he didn't, so he won't even talk about it, he just gets really fucking upset. I would, I don't know, I think, I think that you should rethink whether or not you have that guy on your police force, right? Because putting, what is it, you pull me once, shame on. Because putting, what is it, you, only once, shame on me, folding me twice, shame on you, right? I mean, like, so, um, alright, so, so like, I'm, I'm like grandson of like a Lillian June Bingham from Mason County, Tennessee, right? So I know where to back it up is, right? So when she goes missing out of a book, right? And then pops back up later, I know what I'm looking at, right? It's like, amazing, they say Mason's run time, right? So I absolutely am frustrated with some of this stuff that you guys do, but I, I don't know who is doing it. But some, when you have a whole section on Airport Advisory Committee, just go missing out of a book, that's really odd and hard to explain. And then having the Renton Municipal Code out of the library until 6:30 when the meeting's at 7, right? I think that's kind of a little bit odd, too, right? So that's kind of why I want the security company back, or maybe the King County Sheriff. But, um, I mean, that, that book is a $900 book, right? So like, that book should never go missing, right? And yeah, I was highlighting it to make it easier for people to read that don't read legal, right? But I did a first couple pages, just so that somebody can like see what they're looking at. And anyway, so I still don't see how it would go missing for a entire day. Then, um, yeah, I don't know. So there's a clerical error in 1-3-2-A2, where you're talking about, you made the building code, right? So it was a non, you, like you can have, let's say, easy communication between them, the builder and the city, right? And there's not like a fines and fees that are tied to it, it's not like it goes through the court system, right? So you guys call it the RMC, right? But you believe it's the RBC, or correct? I mean, like, it's a Renton Building Code, right? Anyway, just look at that, and then, um...
I'm gonna need you to wrap it up, Jason.
One other thing. Man, I don't know, there's one other thing. Oh yeah, so you got continued negligence, right? Like, all that together, right? Like, they say that, I don't understand exactly, but it says it's a day-by-day, maybe you can get charged for a day-by-day basis, like, if you like pass something, and then you like refuse to actually put together a committee, or...
...day-by-day basis, or like, um...
Or, I'm not sure if that's what that is, or if it's a different state, that they're saying that is, as in like, if you didn't actually file the paperwork, but you started building your house, or something like that, you know? I mean, technically, isn't that the same thing? But, um, but, um, yeah, if you neglect your obligations, and it's a continued, a bunch of charges.
Thank you.
Have a good.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, next up is Stephen Ratslaff.
Hello, Mayor and the City Council. I'd like, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and my name again is Stephen Ratslaff. I'm from the city of Seattle. And I'm here to present some highlights from a white paper that we submitted to the council, and both in hard copy and in email. And welcome to the new council member as well, Angelina Benedetti.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. The white paper was titled, "737 Operations at Renton Airport: Why They're Safe Today and Will Continue to Be Safe With Either an RDC Bravo II or Bravo III Designation." And I'm not gonna get into too many, too much detail here. I'm gonna just briefly cover this and leave the details for the documentation. The history, I think you know the history, the only, the only error there was that the master plan actually began in 2015, so we revised the date. The impacts of it, I think you well know. For the seaplane base, and, oh, I didn't mention, I'm president of the Washington Seaplane Pilots, and we represent our seaplane pilots in the state of Washington, and this is co-authored by the AOPA, the Airline Owners and Pilots Association, as well as the Renton Airport Tenants Group, and, and then David Lehman, who spoke before me, the FAA Safety Inspector, retired FAA Safety Inspector as well. So I'm not gonna go into the details, except to say that it decreases the capacity of the seaplane base by 75%, so it's near and dear to our heart. In summary, we believe the Renton Airport is exceedingly and sufficiently safe in its current configuration as it relates to flights of the Boeing 737 aircraft. We believe that the change from Bravo II to Delta III as a classification, which results in all the problems, is a misapplication of the airport design specification. We believe there's two options here. We'd like to either request the FAA to take it back to the Bravo II, or there's rationale in this document as to why a Bravo III would apply, which would still provide significant benefits to the airport, and there's rationale in terms of why we believe that's a possibility. Now, to begin with, why it's safe. Number one, Boeing, we commissioned a full safety study of all 737 incidents in the United States from the first 737 till now. The first conclusion was that the NTSB database has no incidents, zero incidents, for the Renton Airport. So there's been no accidents, no incidents recorded on the NTSB database. We also used it to look at all accidents of a type that might be applicable, and that being a runway excursion, and applied that to Renton to look at the difference between takeoffs and landings. All that data is contained in this document. The, but there's a lot of differences between the way Boeing operates 737s at the airport that make it unique. First flights of new models are not allowed to depart south. They never depart south. If there's an emergency after departure, the crew members are briefed to land at Boeing Field and not Renton Airport, so they'll never, they'll never come back to Renton. Boeing has special procedures for a 737 flight to maintain their safety. They never depart in IFR weather, so they're never in instrument conditions. The, on the first flight, I mentioned they're not allowed to depart south, they never fly at night, they do not fly into ice, and they're not allowed to fly under runway contamination like snow or ice. They're required to have extensive crew testing that's approved by the FAA, and every pilot must be approved by the FAA themselves. Boeing's not a scheduled airline, so they don't need to fly in less than perfect conditions. Boeing rarely lands 737s at Renton Airport, and from our data, we can, it appears that less than 2% of the 500 or 750 operations are actual landings. The 737 aircraft that operate out of Renton are substantially different in performance characteristics than in commercial operations, mainly because they're so lightly loaded. They have minimal fuel, no baggage, no passengers, and minimal equipment. So the takeoff weight is typically half of what you would expect. What that means is that they perform much, much better, and don't need the, the space that the FAA mandates for commercial aircraft. Furthermore, unlike other airports with 737 operations, Renton does not have a passenger terminal, and does not transport pilots. There's minimal risk of, of damage or, or death to, to people because there isn't a terminal there. One last point I want to cover, and that's related to what's called the RDC code. That's the Bravo or Delta or Charlie about the airport that designates the requirements. That's based on what's called VREF, which is the reference speed that's calculated for the aircraft. The documentation assumes you have it at maximum gross weight. We believe there's rationale for, for justifying a much lower VREF based on the aircraft. And in fact, I have in my documentation, Boeing documentation that specifies what the reference speed is for the configuration of the aircraft that utilize Renton Airport. And based on that, we can rationalize a Bravo III designation, which means that the requirements come back quite a bit from what they are for a Delta airport. The information about that is in here. We're happy to answer additional questions and provide more information. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Perez.
I move that the council concur with the consent agendas published.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that the council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No unfinished business.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have committee reports from Community Services Committee.
Okay, the, the first committee report is regarding ordinance amending municipal arts commission regulations. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance amending arts commission regulations in Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 8, which aligns the art commission's regulations with current practice. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
That's my friend.
I'd like to motion the, motion to accept the committee report as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the last community service report is regarding appointments to the Arts Commission. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointments of Ms. Christie Randolph, term expiring 12/31/2022, and Ms. Kylie Thornton, term expiring 12/31/2020, to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Van.
I'd like to, a motion to approve the committee reports as read.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that the council approve the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business.
Oh, there you go. No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Aviation Committee has two committee reports to present.
Hey, the first Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding an agreement for wildlife hazard mitigation. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the cooperative service agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture and Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Service for $245,501.23 for wildlife hazard mitigation services at the airport. Signed by the vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurvin.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding consultant services for an airport rate study. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement for consulting services with Aviation Management Consulting Group in the amount of $78,285 to conduct the airport rate study. The committee further recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the related budget adjustment. This is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurvin.
I move that the council concur in the recommended action of the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Finance Committee has committee reports.
Hey, Finance Committee report, this one's regarding vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment of $6,281, excuse me, $6,287,171.92 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers. Payroll, total payment of $1,502,723.95 for payroll vouchers, including 660 direct deposits and nine checks. This is for the January 1 through January 15, 2020 pay period, and a municipal court payment of $16,158.30. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding reorg for the Finance Division. The Finance Committee recommends approving the Finance Division reorganization and reclass of the Financial Services Manager and Supervisor positions. The estimated net cost for the change for 2020 is $106,430, including full benefits for the addition of the full-time equivalent payroll analyst. The Financial Services Manager and Supervisor position will be budget neutral. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the, with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have a Planning and Development Committee report to present.
Planning and Development Committee report appointment to the Planning Commission. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointments of Ms. Bayon, term expiring 1/31/23, Ms. Canore, term expiring 1/31/23, and Ms. Rocha, term expiring 6/30/2020, to the Planning Commission. Signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor, we're very excited about these new appointments to this committee, and with that, I move approval of the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
And one more, Planning Development Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. The Planning Development Committee recommends adoption of the 2019 Title IV Docket 14, item listed below. Additionally, the Planning and Development Committee recommends that the ordinance be presented for first reading. This is item D156, outdoor storage. And, oh, I'm sorry, I'll let you, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to new business.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have one more report from the Community Services Committee. It was at the bottom of my stack.
Okay.
All right. Are you ready?
I think we're missing it, but...
Okay. Finance Committee, this is regarding the Community Services Full-Time Position Requests. The Finance, oh, I'm sorry, this is Finance Committee. This is Mr. Prince. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize hiring full-time positions in the Community Services Department as proposed. Six positions in the Facilities Division, and eight positions in the Parks and Trails Division with salary wages from the General Fund, and three positions for Maplewood Golf Course with salary wages from the Enterprise Fund, in addition to authorize a revised fee schedule for the Maplewood Golf Course. The fiscal impact summary is as follows. For the General Fund, the six facilities custodian positions is $553,731, and Parks and Trail requests, which are two positions, another $579,900. The above requests for both Facilities and Parks and Trails Divisions include a reduction of supplemental staffing costs in the amount of $248,100. So that total is $11,133,631. In addition, to help offset the staffing cost request, Community Services will eliminate the one full-time equivalent position of a Deputy Administrator position that was approved for 2020 hiring. That was a cost of $191,840. So the net total impact to the General Fund is $941,791. And then for the Enterprise Fund, the golf course is requesting two positions at salary grade A4, and one at position A01, for a total cost of $210,974. And to help offset those staffing costs, $90,360 Sullivan of savings and supplemental wages will reduce the full impact to the Enterprise Fund to $120,607. A budget amendment will be included with the first quarter of 2020 for the adjustments. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Thank you. As I was frantically trying to figure out where that committee report is, I'm glad Jason had it. I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're on to legislation.
Okay, I have one ordinance for first reading. It's regarding the Municipal Arts Commission. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 286A of the Renton Municipal Code by refining duties of the Renton Municipal Arts Commission, the commission, and the Community and Economic Development Department, related to the city art collection, approving commission bylaws, and providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
I move to, move the ordinance to be placed in the second, in final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move the ordinance to the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to new business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, February 17, we will not have meetings because it's President's Day, and the committee of the hall will be taking place on Monday, February 24, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers, and we have four items in the agenda. Sunset Late Comer Agreement, Equity and Inclusion Update, Census 2020, Emerging Issues. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurvin.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
There's always new business in finance. The Finance Committee will be meeting Monday, February 24, 2020, at 3:30 PM in the council conference room. We have four items on the agenda. VIBA Insurance Resolution, Conversion of a Mechanic Physician in Public Works Department, Vouchers, and Emerging Issues in Finance. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a Planning and Development Committee meeting immediately following the Finance Committee meeting at 4:30 PM in the council conference room, February 24. And there's four items on that agenda. The first is a 2020 CED Work Program. Second item is a Transit Oriented Development Subarea Plan. The third item is Affordable Housing, and the fourth item is Emerging Issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. I'd like to remind everybody, directly after the meeting, we'll be having a little celebration for our newest member in the council conference room. What's the wish of the council?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Can you hear me?